I'd like to call this meeting of the Cascade Charter Township Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. This is Tuesday, February 13th. All of our members are present. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the current agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 14th, 2023 meeting?
So I make a motion to approve.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to now acknowledge visitors and those wishing to speak on non-agenda items, and your comments are limited to five minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to make a comment? Matty, see anybody? Okay. All right, let's move on to Article Six, Case Number 233808. This is for 3590 Meadowwood Trails. Madison, give us the background.
Hello.
Hello.
We have Mr. Kramer Jr. here this evening. He is seeking a variance to allow a split to a platted lot. This is in the PUD 45 Meadowwood Trails. The address is 3590 Meadowwood Trails, indicated as Lot 8 and 9. The property has kind of a complex history that the applicant can also speak to in a bit more detail than I provided in the staff report here today. So essentially, this was two lots when the PUD was approved. And it was through various different hands was proposed to be combined, didn't end up being combined, had an easement, the easement was removed, and Lot 8 and 9 were combined to what they are today. So the current master deed for Meadowwood Trails still reflects that Lot 8 and 9 exist. And Mr. Kramer has been paying taxes for both lots. And this lot was originally, Lot 8 was originally intended to have a single-family home on it. I'll let Mr. Kramer speak more in depth if you have questions on that specific history. But he is looking to revert these two parcels back to how they were originally, Lot 8 and Lot 9. So when we review this, we have a section in our subdivision ordinance that speaks to splitting of a platted lot in that it's not permitted unless they pursue a variance with the zoning board of appeals. So that's why we're here this evening. So in the subdivision ordinance, the findings of fact. And feel free to ask questions as we go. So first, we consider whether the resulting lots will have a materially adverse effect on adjacent uses or properties. Generally speaking, no, I don't think it would have an impact on the neighborhood or adjacent properties because it was originally planned to be a single-family home here. But my main concern that I noted is that since those lots had been combined, there was an addition to the home on Lot 9 that encroaches on Lot 8. So that's my main concern of the impact on Lot 8. The resulting lots, we need to consider whether it would change the character of the surrounding area or neighborhood, or if it would have an impact on public services. Again, I don't see that being a concern in that there's already existing utilities planned for this property. There is Water Main Sewer, and it was originally designed for the street here, Meadowwood Trails Court, to have seven single-family homes, and there's currently only four. Finally, we consider if the resulting lots will establish a precedent which could adversely affect the long-term goals of the township. So that's also a little bit more complex in considering, do we backtrack on what the lot size requirement of a subdivision is today, back to when this was approved in 1989? This law, if it was split to this original size, could still be in compliance with our existing lot sizes for, if it were to revert to underlying zoning of residential, as well as subject to the subdivision ordinance standards. The main issue is creating a non-conforming lot because Lot 9 would not meet the setback standards. Do you have questions before we continue reviewing?
No. So as I mentioned to you before, just like you before the meeting about re I guess, as part of the packet here, noticing we're talking about a platted subdivision, lot numbers. This is actually a site condominium. It's units 8 and 9 of Meadowwood Trails, which is a site condominium according to Master Deed. Page 13 of our packet gives the legal description of it. So in the discussion of calling this a platted lot, there's a much different legal requirement standing to this than just a splitting of a platted lot. This is not a platted lot. This is a site condominium, which I think has a lot more legal coverage to it, if you will. With that said, I guess my question to staff and potentially legal counsel would be, can we in fact force the combination of two units to meet a setback when in fact the setback was never met when it was originally constructed? Can we, as the township, unilaterally combine two legally separate pieces of property? And opposite of that, can the homeowner, because they created or they have a non-conforming unit within a two-unit combination, can they at some legal point break them apart to create a non-conformity?
But just to be clear, Aaron, there already is one property, 8 and 9, according to the county.
Yeah, so the county registers it as one parcel.
It already is one parcel.
But the master deed recognizes it at 2, so he's trying to reconcile.
The county has no authority to say, we now view Unit 8 and Unit 9 as one parcel, because the state of Michigan, through our actions of a condominium being recorded, is the authority, not Kent County, but the state of Michigan.
So you believe the combination was inaccurately approved?
I would have to ask that of legal counsel, but because this is a site condominium in the county of Kent County, registered with the state of Michigan. I believe the state of Michigan is the ultimate authority, not the county, and not down to the township. We did our due diligence of creating a conforming unit, not a lot, but a unit. Unit 8, Unit 9.
But then why do they have a PUD ordinance?
The PUD is just an overlay of the whole property.
But I think 8 and 9 were combined as one with the county.
The county did this probably a convenience.
So it still describes the property as lots 8 and 9?
It's not lots, it's unit. Unit 8, Unit 9, Meadowwood Trails, a site condominium, according to the master deed, recorded in Libra 2647, Pages 152 through 196. So my question is, even before this is in front of us, this is a site condominium, not a platted lot, they're two distinctly different documents. The PUD is just an overlay of the area, not specific.
Okay.
But I don't know as though we have the authority to say you have to put two units together. I don't know if we have the authority to manipulate those two lines. If I'm the owner of Unit 1 of this condominium development, I also hold an interest in that limited common area that's surrounding the buildable site. In this case, the house sits on part of the limited element. Therefore, if I was owner of Unit 1, part of my rights have been
It doesn't, what do you mean by the house sits on the limited element because it's on Unit 8?
Unit, as you saw.
Not on the general common element.
Okay, as you saw on the page, that is page number, what, 12 over a packet. You'll notice the clear area, which is the unit number. You'll notice, and you'll notice the shaded area, which is which is under the legend as the general common element and a limited common element.
Understood.
So even though the bigger envelope is described as Unit 8, within Unit 8, there is a limited common element.
It's complex.
It becomes multi-layered. That's why it becomes more of a legal question than a procedural question.
But they're not asking us to combine them, they're asking us to split them. 8 and 9 are one now, according to the register of deeds with the county. 8 and 9 are one unit.
According to the register of deeds.
And they want to split them.
My immediate argument would be, the county has no authority to say, Unit 8 and 9 are going to be viewed as one.
But they already did that. It's been done.
That's fine, but it doesn't mean it's legally
So you think
It's legal reality. The legal reality, which is recognized by the state of Michigan, is Unit 8, Unit 9, two distinctly pieces of property. The house was built incorrectly. At some point in the past, somebody said, hey, let's make them put those together so they can't do anything. That doesn't mean they had authority to do it. Again, I question
So now it's
the legality of
Right.
A, the county's ability to make them one unit. And B, if they are viewed as two separate units, you have a non-conformity that does the state, or the association, or the county, or the township, do they have the authority to mandate that it be correct?
Shouldn't this be tabled and referred to?
I think legal counsel does need to review this, just because it's not a platted lot, it's a site condominium.
I think for the, for the applicants, for fairness to the applicant and to get through this, maybe what we could do is go through
On a condition of
On the condition that it's reviewed by legal counsel to make sure the issues of plat versus site condo are have been legally done. What Aaron's kind of saying is that the county didn't have the authority to combine the lots back whenever they did.
I thought it was odd too, that it was
But that might be, so I think we should assume for at least maybe for this meeting, if you agree, Aaron and Mr. Chairman, that we assume that the registration, that the deed registration with the county as one unit, 8 and 9 combined, is fine and legal, contingent upon approval by our legal counsel looking at it. And then we go ahead and make the decision from there about splitting this per the request. So we try to meet the request of the applicant tonight, one way or the other.
Yeah, so you can still give the township's stance on if these were to be reverted back.
Assuming that
Pending that we verify the legality of if it was handled properly with the combination, and if we are able to split it, or if it was actually ever able to be combined.
Right.
Okay.
But for the assumption, I think for the assumption of this case, you know, from the applicant's perspective, it is one parcel today, 8 and 9 are combined.
Right.
They're asking now for us to provide a variance so they can split them.
Correct.
And now we have separate issues, which is, the main issue is the encroachment. So that's the one that we should deal with, and then the overall thing can be decided upon, it can be contingent upon
The legal.
our legal counsel's approval.
Okay.
That way we move this forward for the applicant.
Yes. And to speak to the encroachment, I did go over that with with Mr. Kramer, and he is willing to bring the building into compliance, if that is going to be a condition of approval. He would rather bring it into compliance than be denied. It's my understanding.
And I think we'll have a lot of questions regarding that, but we probably should first move to public hearing, so I'm motioning to go into public hearing.
Moved and seconded to go to public hearing. Anybody want to speak on this issue? We have a vote on that?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye. All in favor, voted yes. Anybody want to speak on this issue? Matty, anybody online? Anybody in the audience?
Yeah. Mr. Kramer, can we get
We need, we need applicant's presentation before we go to public hearing.
Well, we could do it in public hearing as well, so go ahead.
Mr. Kramer, would you like to come up and address this?
As you can see, this has been an interesting and ongoing situation. One that, you know, we purchased this home in 2008, and things started, you know, over time unfolding and learning what's been going on, and there's a history with this property that I've put a lot of time and put a lot of effort into working with all involved to figure out exactly what I could do with this property. Being the current owner, I kind of feel like there's errors, and there were things that were done way obviously out of my control. But now it's my issue, and I'm hoping, I'm really hoping, I have a buyer that's more than, that wants to purchase than wants to build a home. He's provided a document stating he has no issue giving us extra 10 feet. When you look at that diagram, by the way, the aerial, it's got a four and a half foot soffit, the house does. And the house itself, although it's within 10 feet, is not violating the property line, it's the soffit. And so it's that, it's that tight, it's that close. And really, just to clarify, when this all went in, it was, it was the need to put a golf course maintenance easement across Lot 8. The owner of Lot 9, Tom Beckering, needed access to get from the barn in the back to get his equipment up to maintain the golf course without having to go all the way around to the country club. His main goal was to absorb Lot 8, put an easement on it, and then split the lot between himself and the neighbor on Lot 7. It all went forward, and I actually have it, I actually have the proposal right here with all signatures and on it. And it actually comes through and even recognizes approval from Cascade. And then he added on the house. That wasn't the original footprint of the house. What you're seeing where that encroachment over that property line was after the easement was put in.
That's the garage extended out.
He tied in the driveway off the easement to go up and put a double-stall garage on the end for his personal use. Then what happened was the owner of Lot 7 backed out. Didn't buy it. And when he didn't buy it, he left Mr. Beckering holding on to all of it. And Tom, at that point, he had already, you know, absorbed the part of that property line. How he got a building permit and how he got to where he is and where we are today, I don't know. Because according to this, without approvals all the way down the line, none of this, it wouldn't be the way it is right now. And basically, I just kind of feel my wife and I are paying the, absorbing the financial obligations of decisions made by people all the way down the line. Our master deed in our property management for our association still shows 8. It's still there, according to our master deed. I get your point.
So he never did record an addendum to the master deed?
No, he just put in
That's what should have been done.
He put a document in that stated that he would just absorb the dues and the taxes and pretend that 8 is there, even though it's not. And then he went to the county, as you said, and had the lots, had the property combined.
You sure that was about 2008, you said?
99.
Oh, 99.
We purchased the home in 2008.
Gotcha, he did that in 99. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
But never
Yeah.
But never recorded.
I have the documents, I have those, I've trailed all that down. We've actually issued, I actually investigated this about five years ago with Mr. Peterson. And Steve, he recognized this whole thing. And matter of fact, wasn't real happy when he learned that Lot 7, that the proposal never followed through. And came back and said, you better knock on your neighbor's doors and get this in compliance because this is the way it's supposed to be. Well, it isn't. And there's two new homeowners involved, us and, and you know, then the new owner at Lot 7. So, but the one that impacts the most, obviously the golf course closed. The golf course closed, and we were able to have the easement removed legally, and we have those documents, so that was done. We have no use for this garage. We, we were very, very comfortable with capping the end of it off and removing all the asphalt that's in there and allowing this wonderful couple to come in and build a home. And we're trying, they're trying, he's asking, he wants in there very badly, and and from an association standpoint, we want him in there. We really do. We want to add that helps our overall. And so there's, not getting any objection or anything anywhere along the line, other than the fact that this home is sitting pretty much on the property line, it kind of sits on an angle.
Can I ask you a two-part question?
Sure.
With that being said, okay, so the property line in theory is the demising line between Unit 8 and Unit 9.
That is correct.
The buildable footprint
I understand.
is within that envelope. So the first part question, you mentioned the four-foot overhang, cutting it off, no big deal.
Right.
You'd get it, you'd get the building onto your property.
Correct.
That would still leave an encroachment onto a common element.
That is correct.
So are you saying you would take the garage back four feet, or would you take it back approximately 14 feet?
From what I can tell, yeah, I think it, from my estimate, you know, I had surveys done, and we run a string from, you know, back and forth. It looks like it's about six feet.
Okay.
At its worst point.
Not having the, not having the document in front of me to see what that common element, that might be a six-foot sliver, I don't know.
I understand, that was an excellent point.
The easiest question would be, if you're willing to remove the encumbrance and stay within your buildable footprint of lot, or excuse me, Unit 9, this whole discussion is pointless.
I, you know, I'm
If you're going to say, I only want to take the overhang off and stay within have my, have my house, my structure still on the common element, then you still have
I was hoping that, you know, there's options, you know, I was hoping that it was minimal enough to by approaching all of you and asking for either an easement or a variance, would eliminate the need for me to have to move the end of this house six feet.
How many, how many units are within this?
We're allowed 16. You know, we have 16, right?
Okay, so there's 16 homeowners.
Yeah.
You guys understand my question here? So if this is the lot, but you can only build within it, he's saying he could cut the overhang off at the property line, so his building is within the, within the property lines, but the problem is there's still that internal setback.
There's setback issue. Mr. Kramer, did you ever think about changing, when you do the survey? Enlarging Lot 8? Just giving that piece of property over from 8 to 9?
Yes.
Enlarging 9?
Yes, I did approach Madison on that. Yeah, and we did, that was considered, it was something, but again
That would seem to do away with all the issues.
And it wouldn't.
That shrinks 8.
It would be so, as a matter of fact, if you look at the, there is, if you look at the one right here.
But you don't want to create a non-buildable lot.
Correct.
And it would still require a master deed amendment because of the lot size.
When you look at this, this one right here, I'll have a copy of it.
Yep.
There's actually two points, right in this corner right here. If you just took this line and attached it to the next point, it'd be done.
Right.
Yeah, and it's still, would it still be a buildable, it would still be
He already has had a home designed for the, for the property and says this, this area, that's why he sent a letter saying this
I guess that's, so that brings up the point, with this being a site condominium, the master, an addendum to the master deed, which takes in all 16 owners, if that's agreeable, and you reconfigure the lot, lot yin's unit lines
Right.
within the development, I don't think we have any necessary say on that because it's newly recognized because it's a master deed. So the addendum would overlap that and say, Unit 9 and Unit 8 have a different configuration now, but they're still legally conforming
So we just need to remove the combination from, at the county level and be done with it.
I think the reason it was combined at the county is because it is across the line, and it created a non-conforming. So back in the day, Tom said, here's how I'll fix it. I'll just shift over.
But don't we still have to approve
Not if they're redrawing, we're not, we're no longer splitting anything, they're redefining the property lines.
It can be handled within the association itself.
Right.
It's recognizing Unit 8 and Unit 9 as an addendum to the master deed. They're just shifting shape.
It's more of a legal, it's legal within, within the association.
So, yeah, so the ZBA could approve the partition, the reconfiguration, it states it as.
Each unit meets our zoning ordinance.
Correct.
And you, as the one proposing it, have to get approval from your association. So each member of the association. It's very simple at that point.
I'm in the great spot for that.
But I, but I still think, he's still, but something still has to be registered with the county, I would assume.
I would have to go back and show that online chain.
And that's what we'll reference with legal counsel.
That's what the addendum is. They have to provide an addendum to the master deed. It's going to be recorded in Libra Pages, da, da, da. So if you or I ever buy Unit 8 from him, we're going to buy per the master deed with addendums.
That makes, it's perfect sense because it's an addendum that Tom had issued to combine them.
Yep, this is not the first time it's happened. There's addendums all the time that
Yeah.
And you've already resolved that easement piece.
I would remove the condition that a lots application would need to be completed because it would just be handled within the master deed for the site condominium, and the township wouldn't have to approve the lot size necessarily.
You just have to make sure it's still a buildable site.
Correct. But yeah, we wouldn't have to review it for number of splits in the Land Division Act.
We're no longer, we're not splitting anything anymore, we're just allowing you to redefine.
Right.
Just kind of, and it won't interfere with the buildable area.
If that still fits, then that would be perfect.
It's about a 10-foot shift
Yes.
in one direction.
That is correct.
So that both of those lots, 8 and 9, end in a sharp triangular corner.
Yeah.
You wouldn't even know it.
Yeah, that was our other
You would not know it because it goes so deep and off on this dramatic angle, and there's elevation goes down there. The corner of the lot, you'll like, well, you'll see it, the golf, he put the golf cart path right on, on the buildable lot. And they had to mark it with spray paint because it's, it's over the top of the property. It's like, what did you do this for, you know?
My background was government before up north, and this is a case that I've seen on numerous occasions where something was built, they had to redefine the lines, they did it through a master deed amendment. It was not deemed a split, it was just deemed a reconfiguration.
I totally
It's more of a legal counsel, question mark. He's going to have to make sure that when he presents the addendum for recording, that somebody of legal counsel has written it up correctly. Because there's a huge liability that goes on about.
We can, we can work on that.
Yes, we can.
So have we given Mr. Kramer direction?
And it'll be nice.
And do we need to make any
I think if we use a motion that, under these conditions, we
Approve a lot, split, if you will? Approve a lot, a split, if you will, a unit.
I think we can say, if we say reconfiguration, the, the ordinance gives that as an option. It says partition, division, split, or reconfiguration.
And that's what we're doing is reconfigure, allowing him to reconfigure units eight and nine to still meet our zoning ordinance.
Correct.
Moving forward.
Very good. You're very, very helpful.
So we would approve a, a lot or unit reconfiguration?
Unit site condominium, unit reconfiguration.
I got it.
Of lot lines for unit eight and nine, still conforming to the township's zoning ordinance. And meeting all legal criteria as an addendum to the master deed.
Very good.
I need a second on that.
Which, hang, hang on a second. Do you have any further comments?
I appreciate.
Yeah, I believe the public hearing is still open.
Public hearing is still open.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else online?
Make a motion to close public hearing. Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can I now have a motion?
Well, wait, I want to get this clear, clear, because you've made some good points. I just want to make sure. Aaron, you, you, so you want to approve a reconfiguration of lot lines eight and nine? As long as they're still conforming.
Yep.
To township.
Township standards, township zoning requirements.
Township zoning requirements.
So reconfiguration of units eight and unit nine.
Is this your motion?
Yes, with an addendum to the master deed that conforms to the township's zoning standards. Meets the criteria of filing an addendum or amendment to the master deed with association approvals. With legal counsel's review to make sure that everything meets a legal condition in order to record that. And it's a reconfiguration, not a lot split.
Correct.
Okay, that is the motion. Do I hear support?
So do I shoot Madison, do you have it clearly?
Yes, and we have the recording too, so I can go back and make sure.
Okay. Support by member Vera? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll call you tomorrow, Bob.
Okay, uh, let's move on to article seven. It's number twenty-four, thirty-eight, twelve, Hafeman.
I guess we'll stay in the same theme today with lot reconfigurations.
Is this a lot or a unit?
It's a lot.
That's the first question.
Yep.
Okay. So this evening, our applicant is Lori Hafeman. She works at Kennedy's, so she's busy with Valentine's flowers. So we have, uh, Mr. Van Stream with us this evening, Jeff, um, who is the owner of the, the property right now. So he's the parcel to the north, so he can answer questions, uh, on behalf of the applicant this evening. Uh, we have an application for eighty-nine sixty twenty-eighth street. Uh, this is for a variance to approve a lot split or reconfiguration that would result in an accessory building be in the front yard. Uh, so this is in our ARC district, uh, out on twenty-eighth street pass Butrick, uh, before snow. Um, and it's currently about seven acres and the split, if approved with the variance today, uh, would be about nine point five acres. Um, I do want to make a note based on member trustee McDonald's that, uh, I am only referencing one accessory building, but I did reference it in different ways by calling it a barn or an accessory building or a historic barn. So I apologize for that confusion, um, if there was any. So they are requesting that the barn that is currently on the southern parcel, um, would be approved to be in the front yard. Sorry, it's currently on the northern parcel and would go back to being on the southern parcel. The, uh, survey indicates that that would be about one point seven acres of land with the barn transferred to eighty-nine sixty twenty-eighth street. Um, the barn was built in the eighties. It previously actually belonged to eighty-nine sixty twenty-eighth street. Um, but the lots were reconfigured in twenty twenty-one. Um, so it would be reverting it back to how it previously was. Um.
So just.
Yeah, go ahead.
So that, that northern parcel is eighty-nine sixty, the southern parcel is ninety fifty. In twenty twenty-one, there was so, some additional, it was reconfigured in twenty twenty-one that made it a, the, the, the non-conforming building conforming.
Correct. So.
So that's a, that, right, the pole barn.
Is the southern parcel.
Right.
So how this is proposed.
Oh, eighty-nine sixty is the southern parcel.
Yeah. So how this is proposed, this dotted line is essentially what they did in twenty twenty-one. So how this is now is how it used to be prior to twenty twenty-one. It's Mr. Van Street's father's old parcel. Um, and he got some of the land from his dad, which included the barn. And now Ms. Hafeman, who owns property to the south and the east, and now eighty-nine sixty, would like that portion back, which means that the barn would then have to be back on this parcel, which technically to our zoning ordinance means it's in the front yard.
It's not that, well, there was two point eight seven acres transferred in twenty twenty-one, and now we're gonna transfer one point seven five?
So not quite as much as being put back.
But the one point seven five, if I'm correct, is gonna go to that bottom parcel, eighty-nine sixty?
Yes.
Okay. And which then makes the accessory building non-conforming because it's in the front?
Yes. So that previous split they did in twenty twenty-one actually brought that barn into compliance.
Sure. So.
With the current zoning.
Is the, so the variance is more, is the, the variance means we have to do two things, don't we? Approve the lot reconfiguration and then the lot reconfiguration with the accessory building in the front yard?
So you are approving an accessory building in the front yard pending the lot split. So you don't have to approve the lot split. We do that in-house with staff. But because it would result in the need for a variance, we had them request that first.
Yep. Okay, I'm clear.
Okay. Any other questions?
And just so we're clear, we're over four hundred and seventy feet from the actual.
It's way.
Row.
Yes. Yeah. So to, to my point, and this photo at the top. This is the view of the barn from the road, and this is in the winter. So there's no leaves on the trees. This is the barn back here. Mr. Van Street took this from the road.
Yeah.
Um, my point I wanted to make was that it's not a traditional front yard scenario. Um, and that's why I included figure three ten, which shows a traditional front yard being right adjacent to that street right of way. Uh, because this has that L shape, when you approach the home, you come down that curved drive, right? And then you're facing, you're facing the home. So the home is facing the driveway to the west. So this appears to be in the side yard, not the front yard. It's not blocking the home from the right of way, kind of, which I believe was the intent of having an accessory building not be in the front yard. So that was my only finding that would prevent me from recommending approval was that it's in the, the front yard and it was brought into compliance and now it would be brought back out. But I don't really see a huge issue with it since it's already in existence. They wouldn't be building it new. Obviously, if, if they're proposing that now, it would be a different situation to build it. Um, so that's why I did give a recommendation that you could allow it, um, with the condition that we consider it non-conforming. So if they wanted to expand the barn or, or make it bigger or split in the future and make it a home, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want that. We just want it to exist as it is. And the applicant has agreed that they would, um, comply with that or approve of that condition as well.
Any other questions?
So did you say this did have a variance before?
No.
When it was originally built?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Madison.
You're welcome.
Mr. Van Strean, would you like to come up and, uh, discuss this with us from your perspective?
I want to say I'm impressed in how you resolved this gentleman's issue. That was refreshing. Assume you'll do the same for me.
Of course.
Some we agree, some we don't.
Yeah. Well, uh, so full disclosure, I, um, I own ninety fifty and my parents owned eighty-nine sixty. Twenty, was it twenty twenty-one? I guess.
Yeah.
I approached my parents and said, I'd like a little more buffer between my backyard and your barn. And, uh, uh, my, uh, my dad insisted that I get the barn. I really need to get that barn with all the stuff that was in it. Uh, tractors, everything, it's all yours. And so we're gonna move the line from where it was farther down to the south of the barn, closer to the house, so in between the barn and their house. And then out to the driveway, which actually, and then across the driveway, which created the easement, the driveway to get to the house. But that gave me access to the barn. Well, they both passed this past year. And, uh, Lori Hafeman, next door, neighbor for forty-some years, uh, who owns all the other property basically around the house. My dad had sold some property twenty twenty-one to her and, um, some other property. I don't know, maybe some of you remember that piece out there, eighty-nine sixty. My dad bought it back in the late sixties from the township. Eighty-five hundred dollars, twenty-three acres. And he was bidding against somebody for seventy-five hundred bucks, I guess, and I don't call them and said, well, you got it. And so he had to go borrow some money to come up with eighty-five hundred dollars. And then it was a kind of a dump. It was literally, there's all sorts of stuff on it. We had to bury and burn. And he got his hand slapped a couple of times doing that. At any rate, uh, so and Lori's bought, what, a bit of twenty-three now she's, uh, that last piece with the house on it was, what, nine something? Um, so anyway, um, when, when they passed, she said she's gonna buy the property and she's gonna remodel. It's, it's being renovated right now. And I said, well, if you're gonna buy the house and you're gonna live there, you really need the barn because the barn's connected electric, with electricity and water. It's just part of it. Uh, you might notice here, um, I planted a whole bunch of nice trees there, cleaned it up, you know, make it look nice. So it's, really adds to her property. And I was thrilled when Lori bought it because she wants to preserve it. I don't know how many acres it will be altogether. It's something like thirty-some acres, uh, in Cascade Township. And it'll stay that way. She's, her son's gonna move into her house and they're gonna keep it. That was good news to me. I knew my neighbor, it isn't really, the reconfiguration really doesn't change my property that much. I was thrilled that I'm not gonna have three or four homes. There were several develop, a couple of developers that were real interested and put some homes up there. So when she bought it, that kind of put a kibosh on that. So I, I hope, I don't care how we do this, Lori, they're not gonna do anything with the building other than keep it, clean it up and maintain it. They're, they're not gonna expand it. Um, you know, like we said, it'd be a hobby shop and a, a place to keep the tractor and things.
Okay. Do members have any questions for Mr. Van Strean?
No, more to, uh, staff. Because of the sixty-six foot easement for ingress and egress utilities, is this technically deemed a corner lot? Even though it has frontage on twenty-eighth, it has frontage on a easement as well.
Are you talking about the easement that runs, uh, north and south?
Yeah.
Would, I thought the easement would be dissolved.
It would be, yeah.
Yeah, so the easement would be in place.
Okay.
That, I can tell you a story about that quickly. My, uh, when the dad was selling it to Lori, he wanted so much money in the deal. And, um, so he, he gave them that easement for extra money, just to get the extra amount. And it, and it actually connects back, it's an easement that goes back to her property.
That's why I'm curious. It's an easement on.
On eighty-nine sixty.
I mean, it's not a public right of way.
No, no, no. But it's still an easement of, of record for another property. It's, it's, it's an easement on the subject property, but used by a different property. But that doesn't preclude this parcel from utilizing that easement to get out to the public road right of way.
Well, it's kind of a mute point now because, uh, eighty-nine sixty goes to twenty-eighth street.
Yeah, I, I don't think we would consider it a corner lot.
Without having to use that easement.
No, and you, you really, it'd be pretty difficult to build a road or any type through there is. It was just for the extra money. Here's this sixty-foot easement, you know, for X hours.
Just stretching here.
Give us some money, we'll give you some land.
It's about what it amounted to, but you know, it's not, it would take, it's a ravine. It's a, you know, very difficult to building a road or, it was, it was never gonna be used for that. Okay.
So, so eighty-nine sixty, the bottom lot, that's, they're gonna add one point seven five to that, correct?
It'll be carved off a mine.
And when is that planning on happening?
After you guys say we can.
Okay, as long as we have, gotcha.
Yeah.
Once the variance goes through, then you'll do the.
I learned that if we, you know, go through the channels properly, it's a lot easier. So.
It is. Thank you.
Madison's been real helpful with that.
Good.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we go into public hearing?
Support. Motion and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in public hearing. Anybody in the audience like to speak? Anybody online like to speak?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
Uh, Lou will, uh, take the second on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, considering. Further discussion by members.
We always look for exceptions. And, and this, this case has a lot of exceptions, uh, to, to grant the variance. Uh, I think staff did the right thing in, in terms of recommending denied, just based on black and white. But when we get into the, all the, the, the factors and, and how this really goes, there are so many exceptions here. The con, one is the configuration of the lot is unique. Um, you know, the previous lot sprit, lot split brought the accessory building, uh, into compliance. And, but the lot reconfiguration is gonna put it in the quote, front yard. And I, you know, I, I bike out there in twenty, you can't see this. It's, it's so far removed. It's, 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 it's very unique. So, you know, the, the proposed lot reconfiguration, you know, couldn't be done in such a way that this accessory building isn't in the front yard because of the way it's configured. So, you know, that's an exception. Uh, the building can't be seen. It, it's in the woods. Um, there is no injurious impact to neighbors. So I think there's so many exceptions that, uh, I moved to approve the variance to allow this in the, in the front yard, the accessory building in the front yard with, uh, staff's conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded by member Vera. Any further discussion?
Sounds good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. Thank you. Congratulations. Did it right. Okay, I'd like to now move on to, uh, election of officers. Let's start with, uh, uh, chair. We have a motion.
You, have you been chair?
One year.
One year?
Yeah.
And who's the vice? Aaron, Lou?
Valerie.
Valerie.
I move since they've only been, uh, in their existing positions for one year that we keep, uh, Ralph and Val as chair and vice chair.
Second is right.
Yep.
Motion and support.
Motion and support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Motion passes five zero.
Did Bera support that motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, do we need a secretary?
Whoever's of record.
Secretary for recording?
Isn't that me?
Yes.
I'm I move we keep Aaron the secretary because Aaron goes through the details and.
We need that, yes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, number. Mead is our recording secretary.
Great.
What's that pay?
Zero.
Get extra. A little bonus at the end of the year.
Addable.
Okay. Any other business?
Question?
Yes, so there's a few items from Aaron. Just wanted to note that Mr. Goring did remove his shipping container on Burton Street. So that's good progress.
With no garage built.
That no garage built. We do have the the plans were submitted. The business on Spalding that is not permitted, they've been sent a letter and I'm waiting for a response before I take enforcement further, so there's the.
Was the design build, which then converted to a Pilates.
Yeah, they keep just kind of sneaking in businesses, it seems like, and they're not getting the memo. So I'm trying to rein them in. There's a couple other shipping container issues that we're addressing as well. So that's my enforcement update. Other than that, it's mostly been barking dog complaints. And then I was going to let you guys know that we are looking into training opportunities for you guys for the year. If you'd like to get some more zoning Board of Appeals training or further education as you work for the township. So we'll have that on the next agenda for you.
Do we, do we have any cases for March yet, you know?
I do not yet.
Do not yet, no, or do not yet have any?
No, we don't have any current, there may be one coming that's in the process. Also, we did hire Andrea Hendrick as our new planning director. She was not able to come tonight, but she will be here moving forward. And she says, sorry to miss you all this evening, but she looks forward to meeting you all.
Great choice, I think.
Yes, it's been, it's been going well. I'm glad to have a teammate.
Lighten your load a bit.
She missed a couple of good ones tonight.
I know.
Gonna learn a lot.
I know.
I I will say this, the property at sixty-three eighty-nine Burton that removed the shipping container, that happened about, what, a week ago?
Yeah, a week or two, yeah.
Yeah. I was very happy to see that. I drive by it all the time going to the Y. And it just, I know it bothers the neighbors a lot to have looked at this thing for probably the last two years. So when it suddenly disappeared just before the deadline, I was hap, very happy.
Yeah, I sent him a reminder letter just saying, hey, good, it's coming up.
Yeah, you got a lot of money on the line.
Yeah, he did.
Okay. Any other business? Have a motion to adjourn. Member Mead?
Support.
Support by Member McDonald, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zip.
Thanks, everyone.